There's three or four shotgun houses on the west side of the street in Northland. Two houses on all of his workhouse in life, just four condos. Is that the house? David?
As I recall, yes, it was. It was a shotgun style house. Yes.
Isn't that one of the houses we used for the historic platform for the camera?
At this point, the house was called the party of the classic. So if the public missions of council didn't approve it, it would fall.
We can just continue to just tear down historic structures, you know, that have relevance to the city and minority districts without care. But in Oakley, Midtown, Church Street East, and also through the Dolph Way historic district, we have more toward them than those. But if you can't tear down a structure in the historic district without it being older than, you know, it looks like I do, but continue to tear down these types of structures in neighborhoods that are affected. And they have said historic value.
I did want to let the council know, just as a follow-up, that we go through what's called the BLIGHT survey, and we just completed one. And as a result, that's what's really going to target and focus our work in the future with municipal enforcement. Any score that's scored a demolition with that survey, that is a vacant structure, is going to go through nuisance abatement. And what we want to do is let council know that we reach out to the historic department within the city, but also we expect them to, hey, review the data that we're presenting you and come up with a plan to save these structures. Because some of these structures are at the point where they're public nuisance, they're collapsing. They're different states of disrepair, and some of them, as we know, are tied to air property, where it's very difficult for anyone to take action because they don't have the legal authority to do so. So as a last resort, the city does step in to remove the public nuisance. And that's what this program is for. And we do reach out to the historic communities. We give everybody an option to see the data that we're working, to come up with a plan. And we would rather save them. We know that if anyone comes down before the city council, we'll step back, we'll give them a chance. And we even initiated the program where we have a securing. If the structure is structurally sound, roof, exterior walls and foundations, we'll secure it. We'll give it a chance to go to the private owner to repair.
Oh, that property?
This property, I don't recall, but I think we did. There was one not far from it that we did secure, and then there was no action to repair two, three years later. And as a result, it deteriorated and we didn't get demolished.
So one of, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, I was gonna, so David's, David's correct in the, in the way that we established this program, we wanted to make sure that three things didn't happen. One, that we weren't demolishing properties that were occupied. And demo is not, not our first option. Secure is our first option. Number one, we don't, we're not focused on occupied properties, and that, this property fell in that category. Two, in order to get buy-in from the general public and the council, we designed this program so that there was an interaction between the city and the folks who are interested in historic preservation, to make sure that if it is in a protected area, then it goes through that, goes through that process. We don't give any less scrutiny in scoring, whether it's in an area or not. It's just jumping through the extra hoop. And so if, if we're asking whether or not, you know, we give some, some level of credence to a historic property, if it's a danger versus one that's not in an area that's actually been labeled as historic, that's not something that we do. But we do follow the letter of the law when making sure that a property is, is one, not going to be a danger to the public, and two, if it's protected, we go through the extra step.
And the town grounds, the warding, all this is not protected.
True.
So does that mean you just make us all to protected areas? So when you don't have a protected area, then we can just do what we want, because there's, there's no interest to protect it. When you look back through time, we're going to be faced with some same issues we are right now, just like when we tore down Cuddy Lewis's house. Most of these properties that we're talking about, the reason why they called the town ground was why, because of the solar scam there. And the historic value of those properties go well back to before the Civil War. So we're tearing down pieces of history just because of the BLIGHT issue in this. And we're not giving value to the history of that area the same way we give value to the history of the areas. So I think that we need an entity that protects those, renovates those, property acquisition, new property purchase, infield stuff that are in those areas, that protect those areas the same way we protect other areas today. And we're not doing that.
We have that. We, when David sends out his information to the owner, property owners, typically they'll get a flyer for one of two programs. If it appears to be occupied, they'll get a critical repair flyer, and they come through and apply for that for roofing progress. If it's unoccupied, they'll get a BLIGHT removal grant flyer. What we do is based on that survey, we've identified all the exterior BLIGHT issues, and that, that grant provides up to $20,000, including blood testing, because it's federal money, to take care of the exterior issues. The problem is, a lot of times, the cost is so far past $20,000, the owner can't make up the difference.
Okay, let me give you a twin. There's a house on Osho Road, just east of Locky, that was a nuisance abatement 16 years ago when I was on the council. It's still there, because it's protected. It's fallen in on itself, but it's still there. I don't see one inherent damage.
And I'm not saying that all of them get threatened once, but there's a program, there's a mechanism to try to take care of some of them.
The same values should be placed in neighborhoods that have historic value that are unprotected.
So there's two options for us there. One is to seek those same protections. You know, that's, that's, that's one option.
It's three times.
The other option is, is to have an outside organization, you know, seek those protections.
And that's why, that's why we need to, and I say we, the city, because the city should have standards, and we need an entity that's all they do every day, all day. But right now, we don't. We talk about, we don't have shelf-ready projects, but we don't have anybody creating shelf-ready projects to use the money that we have to save.
Comment? So we're talking about protecting these dilapidated houses. Somebody's got to speak up for the people that live on the street, you know, that have to live across the street from the dilapidated house, and nobody's taking care of it. And so when we developed this program, it was because of all the BLIGHT in the city, and because of the diminishing value that happens on a street and in a neighborhood, and it starts bringing the whole neighborhood down. And so we realized that the only way, you know, to arrest this was to, first off, try to rehabilitate the houses. And maybe we don't have the right program in place, but it's certainly within the city council purview to try to create such a program. All right? And so we, we have worked diligently to protect those properties that are salvageable. And first, as you've heard it said, our first option is not to tear these down, down, and you know, they're out there for anybody to buy, in some situations, to rehabilitate. But people are not standing in line to rehabilitate a lot of these houses in certain neighborhoods.
Well, Mr. Mayor, in order first to get them, then we also have to provide some type of incentive that creates, well, Locky, and you're not having this conversation over and over again. You know, independent or individual developers, you know, they tear you away from being the only person there. But if we were to create an equitable presence, where other developers, developers or larger developers would want to get around here, then we've done something. A prime example is my own neighborhood. When I built my house, every house behind me was dilapidated. Every house, not one, but every, except, excuse me, Ms. White and Ms. Callahan, but everyone, and it was on the backstreet too. But because of the OBRF and other entities that came in with, with money, $600,000, I think was from Sheldon that Palmer got, a few, a few dollars from the MHPC, MHPC at the time, look at the neighborhood, and that was striking. But we're not trying anything like that in low-income neighborhoods that have the same historic value.
So I would, so before, before you came back to the council, we have attempted to do those things, and we're still trying to do those things now. But in the meantime, we don't let the blighted property sit there and lower the collective value in the neighborhood. So we, we have actually had the conversation with developers about infield development. And typically, the market doesn't just draw them in. But that doesn't mean we stop. So, and it's not either or, it's both and.
There's some things we can do. Let's talk about it on Down Street. Evidently, this one's fallen so far down the road with no attention being paid to it, that's very difficult to do about it. But there is something we can do to help that neighborhood, the neighborhood's fighting from that. I'll give you a...
Say something.
Empty lots also devalue the neighborhoods, not just the houses, but the empty lots do too. So what are we going to do about empty lots? You know, that's, it's the same thing as having a derelict house.
Yeah, Councilor Carroll, I understand exactly what you're saying, and, you know, do agree with you. I would like to ask you, because I know weekly you do say stuff about this, but it brings something to us. I experienced the same thing in my neighborhood, right there in the corner, Kentucky and Marine, there's a house, and the lady brought the house, and it helped me, so her daughter got killed at the stop sign, heading to work. So, I mean, typically, I had to look at this house, but every time I was, you know, trying to say to tear down a house, there was a group of people that were saying, no, we don't want this house taken down, so it's historical and this and that. But you have some people that don't care if it's historical or not, you know, if it's, you know, you know, they just want to just tore down. And so therefore, I mean, you deal with some people that's saying, no, let's just take this house, let's move it to another lot that's empty, or, you know, let's try to revitalize the house right now. A group, Restored Mobile, they're in my neighborhood now. But if I take some of my citizens in the neighborhood, they'd be like, just tear it down while it's short coming, and then say, let's redo it. So therefore, we got to get like a volume from the neighborhood and from everybody else, because again, even coming with trees, you know, you know, you have some people saying, let's knock down the trees, and you have some people saying, no, don't kill the trees at all, or whatever you think. On the report, council, you're going to look at it and if I support you, whatever you can.
Let's talk, let's, you and I, talk to the administration.
Okay. Um, and, um, Clark?
Okay, and also facing the possibility of this, this 17 on Navarango Street and 7231 and 11th Street. Presentations, petitions and other communications to the council, and, um, McCallum, and Barden, already in the talk terms with the mayor's district leaders, Reverend Clinton Johnson, Reverend Chip Flowers, Douglas Cooper, are all speaking on district two annexation. Bridget Hill, regarding the city's legal impact on education, public safety, use of tax near resources, and the district. Orders is number 64017, orders two, about the city of Mobile Unified Development Code.
I'd like to ask, while I was burning, just tell us exactly where we at right now, and then I'm going to open up the floor with this paper, to go ahead and call.
As far as the mechanics of getting, moving this forward, the, you use the ordinance, the original ordinance on the agenda today. If there's going to be amendments, those need to be made if you want to go forward today. Whenever the, the ordinance has amended or not amended, is in final form, there needs to be a call for public hearing, which I've got, but it's not on the agenda because I wouldn't sure if it will happen today or not. And then the ordinance, or the notice of the ordinance will have to be published for three weeks, and then have a hearing the following week, and if the ordinance could be held over to that date, and which, again, if we're going to go forward today, I think if, I believe it's June 14th, and, you know, it can be voted on at that time.
Just a question. If we, let's say today, we consider a number of amendments, and so, or adopted, or not adopted, we could add, you know, the agenda, the man who said, this is a call for public hearing, right?
Yes. Yes.
Just, uh, right, right, okay, Mr. Reynolds?
Right, as well. So you're saying, sorry, June 14th, if, if amendments were, were passed, and we got it in final form, then June 14th, we'll be looking at, what was that, the date to actually vote, or? On, on the, you can get...
Yeah, the public, the public hearing will be that day, and you can vote that day.
So that would be the earliest.
Right. Because say, you do this today, you got to get the publication together, get it to the newspaper, so that would be published next Wednesday, whatever that date is. Just, and then you got three Wednesdays you got to go. And then if you're the following Tuesday, it would be the meeting, which is the 14th, the way I looked at it on my calendar.
But since we've got so many amendments that we're looking at, and probably some discussion, if we are not able to come to an agreement on these amendments, or just continue holding this over, you know, week by week, or do we just put it off? Do we find a date to put it off?
Oh, yeah, that's up to y'all, I mean...
Because we know we want to get something in final form.
I, I just wouldn't publish it until it's the final deal.
Right.
Or there, if there's enough people, then it's...
But I mean, since, since the Unified Development Code is on the agenda today, we can't come to any sort of an agreement on amendments to get into a final form, then we just can lay this over for a couple of weeks, or something like that, and we're to continue discussing amendments to try to get an agreement, I mean, basically, what happens, just continuing, and then push the final form down the road.
You can do that.
My thought on the amendments was that we have, you know, a month and a half or so to put them all together, and my, my hope would be that today, we would take up everyone's amendments and vote on it, whether we want to amend the UDC as written or not, and vote on the individual amendments, and just, and come to terms with where we stand on the various changes we'd like to see. And if, you know, if they, if they pass, they'll be a part of it. If they fail, they won't be a part of it, and that's just where we are with it. And then we have to keep the ball rolling on UDC, so that would be my point on it.
There may be some that we could agree to today, there may be some that we're not able to agree to, so that in turn might continue to take this down to the final form.
Sure, I, I think that's absolutely a possibility. I thought, I would, I'd like to see us to not have to, once this thing is published, it come back before us, and then we have, you know, some amendment that somebody wants to try to alter of at that point. I'd rather get it all done, I think we probably all would like to get it done, but that's the cleanest way to do it, in my opinion.
Right, because otherwise, it's hard, the entire process begins again.
And I don't want our backs to be against the law. You know, the last time it was on Baxter, or, 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 I wasn't here, but everybody's backing this law, right, let's get this thing done, so that we don't have to republish it, and we can avoid all that this time, and just get the amendments done, go about it correctly, and then publish it, and then vote on it, and... With that also, my two amendments, the short-term rentals, hopefully you all have been able to read it, it is very basic in general, and there was some comment we received an email on about, pretty bothering me. Any person who has an Airbnb that's active today in the city will maintain that this won't affect them. They, they are not going to lose their ability to operate their Airbnb. Let's see, section 64.6, non-conforming use, that's what this would be, is a non-conforming use says, except as provided below, the lawful operation of a non-conforming use is that used consistent at any time within two years prior to the effective date, may be... So they're, they're, they're in, you know, if you've got an Airbnb, they're in. And then also, you know, there's going to be six or eight months between UDC actually being affected, you know, so there may be some elements that come online between now and UDC going into place, that would be, I think, part of the grandfathering as well. That was the biggest concern. And then the, there was a committee that was, had, I guess, a year or two ago to address this issue, and I followed it, I tracked it, and it seems like there's no, there was no agreement of that committee, they didn't agree that on, on all the items. So it's kind of on us now to, to make a decision on what we want to do, and the way I've structured this is really basic. How we're going to regulate short-term rentals.
But shouldn't we establish some type of ordinance resolution, but then in UDC, which covers Airbnb?
Yeah, that's what this is. That's, that's exactly what this is. That's exactly what this is. And it's, and again, it's, it's very basic in general. I didn't try to, you know, check every box, I just, there's a land use concern that exists. I want to try to, I want to try to address just the land use issue, and then there are rules that go along with it, which are just very general and basic. The, the land use issue of, you know, an Airbnb operating as a hotel, there are components of an Airbnb that operate exactly the same as a hotel, and then there's some that are residential, so it's a unique category that is relatively modern. So this is an effort to put it in its own category, and say, this is an Airbnb or a short-term rental, and then establish some general rules, and then later on, if we decide that the rules aren't sufficient, regulations aren't sufficient, all, always have the opportunity to have to. But again, it's, this is bare bones, you know, if you look at several cities, they got seven, eight pages of regulations, so we're not going, we're not quite taking it that far. Any discussion on that, preferred?
Yeah, I appreciate what Ben has done. We did struggle with this for some time, and we had, back when we started this, agreed with the administration not to try to move forward on short-term rentals, because short-term rentals or Airbnbs were not covered in the city's zoning ordinance anywhere, so they were not covered in the UDC. So we realized it was a special kind of category, and the things that we looked at back then, which was to acquire business licenses, you know, zoning, that kind of thing, just all kind of came up against brick walls. And the committee that worked on this unfortunately kind of divided them on residential and those who owned Airbnbs, and they could not come to an agreement. So I think what Ben has put together is the best thing we can come up with now to get this addressed, to give people in neighborhoods a say in whether Airbnbs are open in their neighborhoods, but also there's those who operate Airbnbs, an opportunity to continue and to do so if they so choose to open these throughout the city. So like you said, if this doesn't work, we can come back and look at it again, but this is a good way for us to make the work.
Uh, I think I thought Mr. Jones hit his mic, and Mr. Ahm.
Thanks, Mr. President. Yeah, I, I too think this is a positive step forward. There's two parts of the city, when you start looking at Airbnbs, you've got a, a part of the city that is, is really resonant with, with tourists and tourism, and then you've got a part that are neighborhood-specific. And when you start looking at Airbnbs, and, and Airbnbs in those specific communities are frowned upon by the residents in those communities. So I, I believe this, you know, there, there's no cookie cutter approach in the city to handle this, and I think this gives us the ability to take each application on a case-by-case basis, and, and take a look at that, and make a decision based off of where that is, and it gives us the abilities to vote. And so, you know, having options is a good thing, and I think this gives us the option to do that.
Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I agree that we definitely need something in place on only a couple of concerns. The city is going, we know we have tourists coming in, a lot of people now are not staying in hotels, we saw that during the pandemic, you know, people want to have a different space. I did have a question to Director Batiste, have we had, had any issues, have people calling in or reporting problems with Airbnb properties? Well, I don't know if y'all knew that, that that was a certain property, but did we have any issues or challenges?
Well, we have had some incidents in the past with Airbnbs. I don't have the data before me right now to tell you how many of them we've had over the last couple of years, but we have had incidents in neighborhoods.
Corey, I can say I've had too, since I've been in seat, in specific, Airbnbs in neighborhoods, that, you know, it's been problematic. They've asked us to, this audio, to look at that and see what we can do to, to address it and in order, because right now it isn't regulated. And that makes it problematic on, on, you know, the police as well, as I said.
Uh, Mr. Dave, and Mr. Carroll, you know, someone here from David also.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I support this, this amendment. I think that if you buy a house, if you own a house in an R1 zoning area, you ought to have the right to be informed before someone comes along and turns the house next door to you, or down the street from you, into a, into, into one of these operations. There have been instances where really bad things have happened to these, in these facilities. And I just think, I think you ought to have the right to be informed, and you ought to have the right to comment, to be heard, before someone next door to you, in an R1 area, starts running a...
Mr. Carroll?
I was just calling, Mr. President, because I'm not an opposite, it's a good idea. I mean, I've got problems on Montauk, Caroline Street, Oakland Garden District, with Air, our Airbnbs everywhere, Cat Street. It comes down to how do you regulate the renter, and what does the renter do in that Airbnb? Normally, my issue is, is that I've got a group of college kids having a party at an Airbnb, and the whole neighborhood's walked off because of the parks, and I can assess it for a day. Those types of issues, so I would, thanks for it, for the ones that I'm in. So the one time that I don't read something and keep it out, you know what I mean, I'm kind of getting off guard with it, but, um, the biggest issue is, is, you know, why the regular, or they're required to get a license from the city to operate, what type of rental? What's the callback if, if it's improper rental, are we communicating with the directors of the Airbnb, because there's an entity that actually regulates, and that doesn't do all those things to capture the correct enforcement?
I got...
Go, go ahead, go ahead.
Does some of that. But again, it doesn't do every, it is, you know, again, this was, this was kind of the starting point. I think it kind of got mucked up a bit, you know, in that committee, and us trying to just resolve it all. Right now, we got a land use issue, and I wanted to try to address that, but it does have a total of 13 items that are restrictions on how they operate. So it, it does have some restrictions, but I would say, again, there are some cities that have seven, eight pages of things. So I, I think, I think this is a good starting point, good middle ground, you know, good thing to get into the, the whole UDC.
And my, my one question is, is how do you enforce it? Because if I were right, the way the laws are now, it's hard to enforce anything on the renter or, or the property owner. You know, how do, how do we get to the property owner, and the issue?
And so, there for, uh, Mr. Clark, I need to be very patient, and I wanted to say something to you, if you're on the...
Good morning. I think there's a couple of things. I think I represent a majority of my colleagues in the lodging from hotels. I think there's two primary concerns they have, is one, that whether you're an Airbnb or Verbo or Homes and Villas by Marietta, whatever it is, that people are paying their fair share of taxes for a level competitive kind of scenario. Number two, that they file, that they're regulated with some type of life safety, that way the guests are safe, and so on, so forth. In terms of what you buy, I think from a covenants and restrictions, and HOA, and all that other stuff of land use, I think you need to know that as a buyer. And I think the other thing that, from a regulation standpoint, is everyone needs to apply for a business license, and I think that's where you have some type of, you know, known factor. So I think those are the three primary concerns for my colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
The other is your, this is more important that, that's out there. There's some... There's some, I still think that some of the language there is, on one side, far-reaching. On the other side, doesn't get completely there. I'm hoping that we can push this back a bit so that we can find a way to somewhat merge these languages and get something that's best for all. One item is, is there's another map out here, but it protects only the footprint, but it doesn't encompass properties that need to be there that are to the north and east of there where their industrial properties are budding for their property, they're not included at all. And they need to check it also. Even on the other side of Payton Mill Road to the north, there is the Chippewa Lakes property, which I'm heavily involved with right now. That they have a proposal to create a buffer zone of four hundred by one hundred in between the industrial areas to provide some type of B1 or B2 entity so that the industrialized area can have an approach on there. So I'm going to ask you guys if you can hold this up maybe a week. Let me try to continue to communicate between the two parties so we can come up with something that merges the two so we can actually get some language that works for everybody. Because when I look at both, both sides have great ideas, but they don't merge. One is far-reaching, one is under-reaching. And as I told Chris the day that I saw the meat jack, I thought that some of that language was a little aggressive. So that was the whole reason we asked everybody to get, to give us something. And I reached out to several people and some of that is good, but some of it needs to be put together so we can get something that will match with that.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, a couple of things. You know, when you go north of Payton Mill Road, that is an industrial area. And when you look at Meat Jack, their intent is clear. When they talk about encouragement of the elimination over time of industrial activities within the HD. I moved to this city in nineteen seventy-eight. I lived in Chickasaw, Alabama. And IP was there, Scott Paper was there. The home that I grew up in in nineteen seventy-eight and the surrounding community is now half-blinded. And the property value of the home I grew up in is probably fifty percent of what it was in nineteen seventy. And the whole reason for that is because those business entities are no longer there. That's the importance of those organizations in our city. And when you start looking at that small footprint of that port area and you say, we're going to do away with that small portion of the port, it's going to impact everything you see right here. And when you do away with a small portion, you do away with the port, what happened in Chickasaw, Alabama is going to happen to the City Mobile. I think there's a way and I think that the solution that was presented to provide the protections for that historical district is what is needed. Without infringing upon the ability for this city to move forward at all, I will not support anything that says mortoring. Mortoring is a negative word. When you start mortoring, it ceases and desists. And I don't care how long that is, in a city that is moving forward, we've seen Airbus, we've got the airport moving forward. We just saw across debate a two-and-a-half billion dollar investment with a thousand jobs. And we're seeing mega grants where Mobile is on the map at the federal and national level. Now is not the time to put anything on this table that says mortoring, period. So yes, if there can be other verbiage and other things that we look at and try and come to an agreement there, but it cannot impact industrial operations north of Payton Mill Road. Thank you.
And we missed a day. I'm going back to Mr. Carroll.
Well, I'd like to thank Mr. Carroll for being willing to work with the various parties who have interest in this matter. And I certainly hope that a resolution can be found that everyone can live with. As I stated last week, the continued uninterrupted operation of portable mobile is critical to our economy. Thousands of jobs in this area depend upon it, not just those that are directly related to the port, but those who are, you know, who are indirectly related, you know. Someone, someone who works at Austin or works at Airbus or works at any of, works at the port, works in the companies that work in the port, they buy groceries, they buy cars, they hire plumbers, they hire electricians, they hire everything else. And there are a lot of jobs that are dependent directly and indirectly on the port. We're going to be very careful when we start to deal with the port. I'm not insensitive to the people who live in Africa Town and their desire to create a better community. And I'm not insensitive to the opportunities that are there for the City Mobile in our area with respect to the disrepair of the Lotilda and the development of that area in an orderly way. And I feel like that there is a solution in there somewhere that meets all of these interests. And I certainly hope that that can be found. And I'm perfectly willing to support holding the matter over, you know, for another week or so to see if something along those lines can be developed.
Mr. Carroll and Mr. Gregory?
I agree with Joel and what he said. I think we are all very sensitive to what is happening in Africa Town and want the best for everyone who lives there to sustain and improve and move forward in a tremendous positive way what is happening there with the Lotilda and everything else. We also, of course, are very sensitive to the port and to our industrial partners and what that all means for our city. One thing that concerns me is any holdups or any disagreements on what we move forward with on these amendments, how that could impact the passage of the UDC as a whole. As you all know, we have been working on this UDC for, I can't even count how many years now, five, six years. And the last thing I want to see is our UDC tanked because we can't come to an agreement on something in one overlay. So like Joel, I would love to see us be able to find a resolution to this so that it works for everyone and move forward. One other thing, if we could consider today approving the amendments that we all do agree on so that that way we only move forward on maybe one, I would propose that we, I know Ben has got one other with Ben. Take care. Oh, and yes, and there is one other one too. So if we could look at those amendments that maybe we can't agree on today, go ahead and vote for those to get them sort of into the draft, and I think that will save us a little bit of time.
It doesn't affect the timeline, does it?
Well, but if we could go ahead and get those adopted and within the draft, then the only other amendments like the, this is there.
Then that goes, the timeline was already final, agreed?
Yeah, yeah, because a big UDC is a whole.
Mr. Carroll? Mr. Ian?
No, I agree with Gina. You already counted them. But I agree with the support Carroll and holding it over. I think it's important for guys to work with both residents there living in the community. We know what the port does for our city. So I'm excited to figure out how we can do this together so we can move our city forward. So I support, you know, Carroll holding it over and get some light so we could support both groups. Thank you.
Let me ask you a question, Mr. Carroll. Within the next week, do you think that you can have your meeting in the several? So we hope it's over two weeks.
Two weeks would be fine.
Will be fine.
They were made, I didn't need to go that long. I think after hours yesterday, that'd be making close, right? I don't see everybody. I see one of three. But I think we may be close after hours yesterday of just back and forth. So it may take a few days or a week depending on what everybody's prepared to.
Once you get an agreement, you got to get it around to all of us so that we can see it as well. I just, I don't want to push you there.
No, Gina, you know that I'll ask Chris to send y'all.
I just don't want to, like you said, throw a vaccine at the law and just give it only a break for a long amount of time.
Yeah, well, if we can get it this week, then we'll do it. Is that okay with you? Yes, well.
So we can get it. Okay, everybody?
Jones? You have a question. You said there was amendment from Rossler.
I'm Mr. Rossler.
Is that this one?
Group home.
Group home. Okay, thank you.
Did you want to respond to it, Mr. Rossler?
Yeah, I think we could use a little bit of regulation.
And when we started several months ago making some amendments as requested by council, one of them involved the group homes, community residents, community apartments. For the, for the larger ones that exceed the cap of what is defined as a family, we understood the council wanted to make those, instead of going to the Board of Adjustment, make those conditional uses so they come to the council. In doing that process, we didn't, we didn't catch what we were changing. We also changed those that fit within the definition of family, which is four people unrelated or that form a nucleus of a family. So we're changing it back to make, make that correction. So if community residents, as you see in the first paragraph, fits within the definition of a family, either all those persons related or up to four unrelated, then they are allowed by right in every, every place where a single-family home is permitted by right. Now, that is requirement of the Fair Housing Act. We have to treat community residences that fit within that definition of family the same as we treat a single-family home.
That's what I was going to ask because that's been a question, I think, in a lot of our neighborhoods where there's a group home or even like a transitional sort of home. Why are they allowed, you know, in our neighborhoods? So that's been a question. This is also impacts just individuals who are renting a home, students or, you know, others. Does not impact that. So they can have how many? Four or up to ten people who are just living in a home, just renting the house?
I'd rather answer that. But they don't, just anybody, a student or whatever renting a home, is just not covered under this community residence. This is for persons that, you know, fit within that definition of community residence, which involves people with a disability.
But as far as, just as with example, students renting a single-family home, is there any cap on how many can be in a home? I was thinking that we had like, wasn't it six or something for a part of?
It's, it's the same as, it's the same as the family. So, so what Mr. Rossler just stated is correct. Number one, we do have a cap, but you have to, number one, treat people the same for Americans with disabilities. But two, if they don't have a disability, there is no protection from the zoning issues. And we can't, the cap is there. So it's, it's family. It's, it depends on, yeah, it's four. It's four.
For a single-family residence in an R1 district, you're allowed to have up to four unrelated persons.
Yes, no cap on a family. You can have as many children as you want.
So it's going to be smacking that.
Want to make that statement.
So in reference to nine, if you want through nine, or is it nine sixty-one through nine sixty-three? How's that affect both of them? Broad Street line? Cross Street?
Boarding houses. I know where you live. This, those aren't community residences, are they?
I think boarding houses look at it differently.
Boarding houses are a total separate category in the, in the zoning law.
What about hourly rentals?
Hourly rentals?
What about?
I don't know what about those.
I repeated it. Do I need to say it third time?
Hourly rentals?
But they would be covered by the short-term.
I guess they would.
You got jokes now, right?
No, no, I guess they would be. If it's less than a hundred and eighty days, it's covered by short-term.
I mean, for those of us that live in my neighborhood, Jared, we all know what we're talking about, right? It's a real issue.
I understand.
Well, I'll, I'll make a point to that. And if it is an hourly rental, one of the things I added in here, that's not directly at hourly rentals, but the short-term rent, it says, the short-term rental shall only be rented to one group or person at a time.
Right.
Example would be renting out multiple individual rooms to multiple separate group enforcement actions.
It was funny, but I wasn't joking.
And it's a rental for less than a hundred and eighty days, so it's a short-term.
If it worked, it worked. But we need to stop those types of things. Appreciate you, Jen.
Sorry, anything else from the council?
No, I appreciate you guys letting us hope for, hopefully this week.
So are we in agreement with the amendments from the administration and with Ben? Okay, oh, yeah, did they care?
Yeah, and I'm just treating it. Everybody's got a copy up here. So, you know, if y'all got any questions about it, it's pretty straightforward. There was no category for child daycare, home-based child daycares for more than, for more than six, up to twelve children. This establishes a category to address that. So it just is a pretty simple. These things requested in coming to the Board of Zoning Adjustment, Board of Zoning Adjustment has no authority to address these items as they come up. Because they're, they're dealing with property-specific concerns or barriers that's related specifically to the property, not the use of the property. The planning commission deals with the use of the property. So that's the idea here is the Senate on your condition.
Six or less, we have a right in R1.
That's right. That's how, that's how. You know, the city's been operating in that way for a long time now. And then it was included as, as part of the UDC, you know, as submitted. And I just took a step further to define from seven.
So again, we deal with the second, correct?
Yes. So, so at the meeting, we'll, we'll take the item up, move second, add, and then let's vote on those individually and then table, or sorry, hold it over for.
All right.
Consent resolution filed over thirty-seven, three ninety, recommend the UDC work the issues of especially Miss Russo with the license to live cigar lounge on Saturdays at the Coop.
You live in Carroll?
Yeah.
Thirty-eight, three ninety-four says conference over weeks, week length, group sixteen, twenty-four.
I will promote and send all this one again until we get, I know they're working hard on it.
That was held over. Yeah, it's on a whole week issue.
Still, still, I like, still listen to this consent.
But it's held over. It's held over.
Yeah, I mean, I prefer, again, it just goes back to we're behind on some of the officials contracts, behind on getting some of the grass cut. It's just sort of not fair to apply leans to private property where people not got their grass and they're not that now grass.
Somebody, sorry. I had this conversation yesterday. I can't remember who I had. So much was going on yesterday, but somebody mentioned that, remember you? Did I talk to you yesterday? That we should stop placing leans on lots that were cut. Or it was something to that effect, but I can't, so much was going on yesterday, I can't remember. But it sounded like it was an idea, but it needs to be looked at. And based on what you just said, I mean, my neighbor was some block, let me not say it. There's some people that may not cut the yard on time, the weeds might be a foot too high. Do you understand that we don't impose leans on them or forcing the big yards to play with it? It may be something we need to look at as a part of another structure.
Yeah, that's a ordinance that's been passed. And I'm not necessarily in favor of not applying leans. I think it's an effective tool. I'm just saying, we shouldn't be applying the lien when we're not keeping up with our grass and property. So this is just sort of a short-term, maybe it's a cellular, not a, like, ever. for a short-term lien, it's a cellular, we're not, we can't worry about it. We're gonna cut our grass, you're gonna cut your grass, we're all gonna put them on some, that's my idea.
Mr. President?
I want to add on to this, and it's very interesting. With all of these major issues that we have going on right now, I received an, an ordinate amount of emails this week about those area issue in my district. They care about the grass being cut in right-ofway and how it impacts their drive, fluid from work, going back home. And, you know, I think this gets to what we hear Williams say all the time about stopping bleeding and keeping people in the city. If we don't have aesthetically pleasing city, they, and, and look, it's, we got rain, we got heat, we got spring growth, so everything's growing, you know, get it? And, and it's not an easy task. I completely understand that. But it is interesting to see the amount of interest from our residents on this specific issue. And it's something that, you know, I'm glad we're addressing it. I'm glad, you know, we're collectively looking at this and trying to fix it. It is important for the people residing, and I think we, we need to keep it high on our guard on these things.
Mr. President? No, I'm Mr. Rossler.
There's a couple of specific roads that I've asked because I think their public works is aware of it. So, you know, we.
Stay, you okay? All right. I'm sorry.
Resolutions held over zero eight four zero three. Who lives with four MSA brand compressed air escape kit for fire rescue department? Zero eight four zero four and four zero five are blue purchase orders for fuel at various locations and for the way transit. Zero eight four zero six, blue purchase order to Alton for galvanized grease samples. Zero eight four zero seven, blue purchase order to MHC truck leasing for Ford pickup truck. Zero eight four zero eight, blue purchase order to North America Fire Equipment for thermal imaging camera kits. Zero eight four zero nine, blue purchase order to linear systems for digital information management system upgrades and support services. Twenty-one four ten, authorized contract for air conditioning for mechanical upgrades to the maintenance center. Twenty-four four eleven.
I just got a quick question, and maybe you can answer this. Do you have any divisions you've got, like, all part of this year that you would consider? I know this is a very odd question, and, you know, I don't need it right now, but I'm curious. And if you like the use of that facility and, you know, there's bringing up a lot of discussion at times, especially when we have a shit on, you know, there's, it would be interesting. I, I always see people going back and forth when we're all talking and coming up here. So, I know we have a lot of conferences, but I don't think we let our residents know really how many conferences and stuff we really have going on in the city that's bringing folks in. So, just, just a thought.
It's a little over a hundred right here.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Twenty-four eleven, authorized contract for garden associates for bolted protection at Mobile Alabama Cruise Terminal and Northwest Maritime Seating. Twenty-four twelve, authorized consulting contract with the, um, PAG for regrouping at various city facilities. Twenty-one four thirteen, authorized contract refuse three sixty services for right point one. Twenty-one four one four, authorized contract with Incardium loan for group replacement and exterior repairs at Mobile Technology Center. Twenty-four fifteen, authorized contract for micro construction for driver repair and crash station number fifteen. Twenty-five four sixteen, except current stock on patient and right point one permit, lead of for the North Laguardia Avenue construction project. Twenty-five four.
Uh, Madam President. Uh, sorry, miss. Forty-two, the building list for one-one-four-one-two, the citywide building list. I'd like to get that list. I've never seen that list of what the citywide buildings are, because we have CIP.
So, I sent you an email that directs us, directs you to the website, the city's website that has the list of all the projects, building projects.
He's talking about, you know, eight years ago, seven or eight years ago, when we first started on this, we had the discussion as to what, and mainly, these are buildings in District Two. Which buildings would be designated as citywide buildings and, and so maintained separately from the individual district CIPs? And I, you know, I tried to look for that because that was a discussion primarily between myself and Councilman Nancy.
We, we, we've got it. We can share. We'll send it out. Jazz, Jazz will send it out today.
Yeah, can we give that before ten-thirty? It'd be nice.
Sure.
Twenty-five four seventeen, except right of the D for public roads from the Ford Smith Center for the three-mile grid greenway trail. Thirty-seven four eighteen, consider pool of sitter public convenience and necessity, the L and L Express to operate today's service. Sixty-four nineteen, approved settlement agreement and release of claims. Sixty-four twenty, authorized council to hire consultant to perform and provide pressure polarization today.
Uh, Ms. President?
Spoke with President Small yesterday about this, and today we are just voting on whether to hire a consultant or not. It does not provide for a contract or any particular firm at this point. This is just the approval to move forward. So, hiring somebody, doing interviews, that sort of thing will come after this.
I will be a one net to a community. I'm gonna carry it down, I think thirty. And it'll be one of the others. I'm sorry.
Orders is meaning to do sixty, um, four, six, four zero two nine, three, um, film press, load, and I'm sure, consent resolutions being introduced. Zero three four two three are through various point of access and on the property to the industrial development board. Thirty-seven four twenty-four, recommend approvals may receive board, the issues of especially mental health, people like students, cigar lounge, Friday night, I would say the Riverside Park. Forty-four twenty-five, twenty-six twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-four, thirty-four, thirty-five are fixed in the cost of the demolitions, state structures. Sixty-four thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, for, uh, interim appropriations. We've moved a law enforcement foundation, big partnership, Calway Smith Little School, Family Council Institution of Mobile, and Urban Foundation, leading the Gulf Coast, reversal, foundation, certain purpose, approval payment. Sixty-four four three, approval for a special bonus to the firefighter of the month. Resolutions being introduced.
One minute, um, before you go, for the, uh, for the, uh, hurry. I'm going back to thirty-seven, dash four two four. Uh, just, I know we've been getting emails and just talking about the Friday Night Live at the group. I mean, what, what, what we, you know, we had been in, what we expect to get from it, et cetera. Can you just give us a minute? First session.
Presentation?
Yeah, if you want, please.
Good morning. So, Friday Night Live is part of our quarterly concerts that we do four times a year. It's bigger than what we normally do every month on the second. Saturday, we do Saturday nights at the Coop, which is live music that's out there every Saturday evening. Friday Night Live is in a different location, at different times, and there's a, it's a higher caliber artists that we bring in during that time.
So, they're just coming into town?
I'm sorry?
Into town, coming into Mobile. They not from Mobile, correct?
Not, not all of them. Some of them, we do a lot of local. Once we've done that, we, we are expanding out regionally to bring artists here.
And besides the park and recreation, uh, where is, how is we promoting these events?
Uh, we do a lot of social media. We do, where we do buys to expand outside of the area. We also do a lot of, it's like target marketing. So, we know the target that we're looking for in that group. We work with the artists to also market. And I don't have all of the others, but we actually work with a fire marketing company that does a lot of outreach on our behalf.
Do they keep, like, tally of, like, numbers that come to these events?
Yes, we do.
So, last year, like, was there like higher, or did it hire, you know, certain times of the year or what?
I can get you those numbers.
That'd be great.
Yes.
I appreciate it. And, you know, I'm very, very supportive because I get tired of hearing Keith say it's nothing to do with Mobile. I'm sorry, Dave, things are to do. It's a long week, all the directions, you know, mostly for, thank you.
Uh, Mr. President, thank you.
Resolutions being introduced, zero eight four four four, reverse order to K I two meaningful projects for Chevrolet Typos, two hundred and six thousand, seven hundred ninety-nine dollars, ninety-six.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Johnson?
I'm just curious. It says an overhaul, but those are a hundred and three thousand dollar a piece. Any deal with the?
They're not, they're just, actually, I'm told it's a typo. It's three Chevrolet Typos, not two Chevrolet Typos. They are averaging about sixty-five thousand, uh, a piece. And they only got one bidder. You guys know that we probably had to get your vehicles in as we try to get police package cojos in. We're running about a year behind in getting those vehicles in. These are not police package vehicles, but the only bidder came out of Miami, and so they are running about sixty-five thousand.
Three seventy is basically.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
It often comes up to people consistently, ask the question that, now, I understand that we probably haven't approached this subject. All vehicles for the city go to motor pool? I know several times I've heard council people ask that question. It's, it's so we can keep track of the dates and how long we're keeping them on the roads for accounting purposes, so we can keep the fleet up. Even if they're assigned to police or fire, they still are assigned to motor pool for accounting purposes. Just so.
The way it's laid out normally, that we know.
Okay.
This one wasn't.
Zero eight four forty-five, approved purchase order to slivers for, for, approved half, he's up for thirty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars. Zero eight four forty-six, approved purchase order to Shaw contract orange, for synthetic turf at Matthews Park Baseball Wheel, four hundred ninety-four thousand, nine hundred thirty-four dollars.
Mr. President? I cannot without doing absolutely out saying of this great partnership between District Four and District Five. Here it is. And you put in action, I want to be added as a sponsor. I hope Council Day will join. Absolutely. I'm absolutely delighted. I'm really joyed to have Councilor Reynolds join in this project. Matthews Park, as I think all of y'all know, is a, I mean, it's not a District Five park. It's a city park. It's used by kids all over the city and even in the county. And I'm, I'm delighted that District Five, District Four are joining hands up.
Mr. President, this is a comment to add on here. I mean, as, as you look at all of our parks, I think all of them are utilized by folks throughout the city. And that may be something that we want to look at moving forward is, is, you know, maybe it shouldn't be district-specific. Maybe that's something that, that we need to look, you know, across the breadth of all of us to, to take care of these. Because I don't think there's a park where one of our districts doesn't participate in somewhere at some point in that year. So, this is something to think about.
Zero eight four forty-seven, approved purchase order to use codes, Gordon, Moscow, Moscow, sports lighting, for players to damage to the lighting at Millavon Park, twenty-nine thousand, one hundred sixty dollars.
Mr. President, I gotta ask. I hadn't heard about this. What was the source of the damage to that?
I don't know. It's a call. I'll get it for you, thanks.
It was a lightning strike.
Lightning strike? Okay.
Lightning strike.
Right. That doesn't surprise me. Thank you.
Zero eight four forty-eight, approved purchase order to Southern Light and Tragic Systems for thirty country light foundations, thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Zero eight four forty-nine, approved for the plan A P L for spark lights and lamps for standard theater, thirty-two thousand, four hundred eighty-six dollars. Zero nine one fifty, approved transfer lines for general fund capital, who was currently used for the billions, sets with the plan, four hundred fifty thousand dollars. Thirty-one four fifty-one, a faith they need. American Rescue Plan, extra plan to include redevelopment for affordable housing.
Uh, I'd like to, uh, do something on the administration office. I know some of the council, uh, was in president when this all started. Chief Sack.
Can, can I, have I got one, one on the item before this?
All right, go ahead.
And maybe Casey or David, Pearl, Black, maybe y'all knows. On the resilience assessment plan, the National Flood Insurance Program recently came up with some new standards dealing with risk rating two-point-oh. I don't know if any of y'all paid any attention to it, but it's gonna, it's essentially gonna equate to about three thousand of our residents seeing significant increases in their flood premium. And I don't know if this study gets into that, but resiliency certainly does. And I wanted to know if y'all have considered that as part of the implications to this increase of premium for, for our many residents, especially in Districts Three and District Four. You can pull that information up on the English website to see, you know, the projected increases.
Yes, the answer is yes, we have. And we're looking at, it's really two separate, although they're related. It's two separate initiatives we have going. But one, we are looking at that and, and adjusting, or working to get us to a higher level to help mitigate the increase, projected increase in the insurance and the current increase on insurance to flood insurance to those residents that are impacted. But this, this, this resiliency assessment, assessment will look across multiple areas, everything from homelessness to blight to, you know, hurricane resist, you know, being more hurricane resistant to sea level rise and all that. It'll look across the full spectrum of resiliency in the city.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. So, the ARP, and I handed out the allocations that were passed by the previous city council prior to the, the new city council coming in. But that was proposed, the original proposal was made in the summer of twenty-twenty-one. By August of twenty-twenty-one, the city council approved those specific allocations and asked to remove the Gapers Project, which was one of the original lists, in, in effort to see if there were other multifamily projects that may be more compatible with ARP or more suitable. We did that. In October of twenty-twenty-one, the RFP went out to look for multifamily program or multifamily proposals in the city of Mobile. We had seven responses that came back to the city. Out of the seven, only four of them really made minimum qualifications in that they had site control and they had capacity. The developer had capacity to actually execute on those. Out of those four, one of them actually was, had some difficulty with the unit price. And so, we, we were left with three other proposals. Out of those three proposals, two of them were west of I-65. And if you can see how the city council allocated that money, they wanted to go east of I-65 with the bulk of the ARP money. So, that left only one proposal east of I-65 that met the site control and had developer capacity, and that is the Gapers Project at one-sixty-five Dolphin Street, which is why it's back on your agenda today. The developers are here. They're, you have Tom Champion and Will, they're here. We've also spoken to Kathy LaBorde this morning and talked about this project. So, the eight million-dollar ARP allocation is a mortgage, a twenty-year mortgage to be repaid to the city of Mobile. I'll remind the city council that this ARP money, and if you look at that spreadsheet, there's over twenty-nine million dollars set aside for affordable housing. We have incurred less than a hundred thousand. That money has to be under contract by the end of twenty-twenty-four, and it has to be spent by twenty-twenty-six. And so, that's why we're moving forward with the Gapers Project and ask for your consideration on it. And we're here to answer any questions. And again, the developers are here as well.
Mr. President, very quickly, this is a good deal for the taxpayers facing lockdown for taking. Mr. President, very quickly, this is a good deal for the taxpayers, based on what I could tell, we're taking eighty bucks of federally incurred money, issuing a, a, a loan to the developer, and all that money eventually makes its way back to the City of Mobile, as still restricted federal funds for, you know, an, an additional project down the road, so I think this is a good deal for the taxpayers.
Uh, Mr. President? Uh, the loan that he's speaking of is not a conventional mortgage loan. Uh, yeah, the way that this works, I think that the loan is based on either revenue of cash flow, so if it's a negative cash flow in an annual payment from the, from the nonprofit, then the City of Mobile receives nothing. The only way the City of Mobile gets anything back is if there is a seller mortgage, a change in the hands of the property, or a cease and desist in it, then the money becomes liquid again, and then the city gets this money back. City's not gonna see our money back on this.
Say what?
No, I don't think the city's gonna see our money back on this, because the way that it was explained to me yesterday is that the revenue that they receive bases the amount of the annual payment. So, the only way we can, and then is a, was it fifteen or thirty year commitment, or thirty five year commitment, on top of that, the only way we can get our money back is if the seller's changed his hand, the other thing is, is that we're not even in first position to plead on this, we're either in second or third position on this. So, I mean, we're, we're, it's, project looks good, but to say it's a conventional loan where we're in first position, getting a payment every month, every year, it just doesn't work like this.
So, one of the things, the developers here, they can address some of the issues, so let, let me say this, there is, to, 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 to say that we're not, where the city is not going to get paid, it, that's only, I mean, that's only if this is not successful. That's, that, it's speculative to say as much, it's speci, but you also have to think about the dual benefit, I mean, this is a, this is ninety five units, and, and, and Tom and Will could probably address this issue in more specificity, but think about this, cash flow's there, city gets paid. This is rent cap, but this is downtown, it's the Gafer's building, it's, it's a, it's a highly sought after area, um, and we know, I think everybody knows, it's workforce development housing, too, rent cap, uh, cost cap. Think about this, with the amount of housing that we need in the city, ninety five units downtown for people who are gonna be in workforce development, uh, whether that's people who are wait staff, working in hotels, you know, the people who need housing, the workforce development, that is an area we know, I mean, ninety five units, they'll fill up. I mean, and if they fill up, that cash flow will be there. The other thing about it is, think about this, you have a twenty year and a thirty year, going forward, if the city is not getting, the city's not getting cash flow, then you still extend the amount of time that the city is getting affordable housing, past that twenty and thirty year period.
But I see that, but still yet to say that we're getting a hundred percent of our money back, I don't think that's truly transparent, um, and that's just the gist of it, I see this all with calm, and we have to be extremely transparent with people that we're, that are dealing with here. I've never said property was that project, but we have to be extremely transparent with the money that we're using, and, and that's what it comes down to, you know, uh, if, if you're at six percent of A M I on this, and you're looking at somebody that's making fifteen, and I, I did math on this yesterday, you're looking at somebody making fifteen bucks an hour, you're talking about somebody making thirty two thousand dollars a year, and after taxes at twenty four percent, they're bringing home twenty four thousand dollars a year. So, you're looking at apartments, like they said, between six hundred, eight hundred dollars a month, you know, that's affordable for somebody making, bringing home twenty four, twenty five thousand dollars a year. But, the ARPA funds also were, were set to be used in areas that were the least deprived and not coming back as much downtown, Boston and Blue, what about the bottom of the campground? And, and, and you, you see what I'm saying?
Very fair question.
Boston and Blue?
That's a very fair question, but not, not factually accurate, and here's why, because, two reasons, one, if you look at, at, at the bottom and the campground, we don't have any developers who come to us and ask us or present anything, and if we have them, it's not, remember, it's not either or, it's both and. If we have those developers, there are funds set aside to do so, but we have not had a single developer, so, that's number one, but even if you do have a developer come forward, it has to be, to, it has to be the point where you're not over subsidizing. So, this is a thirty two million dollar project, we're, we're getting the, the leverage from these ARPA funds, and you're helping workforce development housing, affordable housing. There are very few projects that are gonna fall squarely within the treasury and the home regulations and fit in Mobile. It is, it's a great idea to look at the campground, it's a great idea to look at the bottom, but we have to have a developmental partner that comes in and say, I'm going to, say, for instance, come in and say three fours, it doesn't have to be that much, but they have to come in and say, we're going to put the property in there and not have the city over subsidize any particular project with these funds.
Again, uh, this goes back to what I said earlier, and you're alluding to shovel ready projects that are developed, you're coming to. The reason why we don't have them is because we're not creating them, that's why we don't have them. I mean, we haven't created this type of shovel ready project in a decade or, or longer. This property, the Gafer's building, was a, uh, the same matter of contention under the Sam Jones administration, with the same hurdle, and the hurdle was, was the increased cost of development because it's a historic project. This is nothing new, we're using this eight million dollars to bridge the gap in what's ended up the burdens of costs of renovations of a historic project. This money could be well used somewhere else if we had started putting a process in place where we were creating shovel ready projects. For example, what about Africa Town? What about housing rehab out there? We had properties out there that were ready, shovel ready to go, the problem was is they sat in the administration of somewhere for so long, and the title wasn't cleared, so nobody can work out their own right now till it's cleared, if we haven't done that already, but that's the same type of thing that I'm talking about. We have to have somebody every day creating this if it's gonna work, we can't just wait for somebody to come do it ourselves.
So, I think you all know, and this council and this administration has given extreme support and continues to give support and will continue to give support to Africa Town, so you have the A R C, um, you have Representative Clark help forward that movement, we are working hand in hand, the same group is working hand in hand with them to make sure that we are developing those houses out there in Africa Town. Um, we've had those conversations, we've sat down and talked about it at length, we've never left that area, but you do have a developmental entity which was formed in large part out of Representative Clark's work, and then the help of your colleagues and this council and the administration, and, and that's not going to stop. I mean, that, that is going to continue, especially with the forward movement of Africa Town.
So, Mr. President, uh, if, I want, I want the chance for all the people that have called me since last start, that, to actually see here and have complete buy into this, and be able to know exactly what's going on with it, and have their questions asked before this is followed on, can we push this back a little?
I, I hear you, but it's gonna take longer than a week or two for them to get it.
Yeah, I, I advise, Mr. Carroll, um, this is per reading, and, um, to go ahead and set the meeting, and then also invite the council, make sure that we can also hear also, and just go ahead and set the meeting up as soon as possible.
Let me tell you all this.
The attorney, Mr. Mayor.
So, oh, I mean, uh, Ms. President, I wanted to tell you so that, you know, your back's not up against the wall, so typically what we're doing is two things, one, is we've got to allow the developers to submit an application, and then we're dealing with, you know, the bonding issues, and that week is typically the third week in June, that's one of the reasons this is before you now, is so that we will have time for conversation and input, but note that we do have to have time to get those things ready to go forward, so we can submit, so it's on the agenda for the state level people in, in the third week in June. So, we're, we're okay, but I just want you to be cognizant of that, that impending deadline that we're dealing with.
That was, that was my question, it's a hard deadline, but something has to be committed to in the works in order to not lose this money?
So, that's not a black and white answer to that question, because, uh, the amount of funding available this year and the amount of projects that are being, that are out there, let's say, across this state, okay, there's probably more interest than has ever existed because of the amount of ARPA money that's out there, okay? So, typically, they do not run out of funding, but when we were applying, Jamie can use the exact, uh, the correct terminology here, but when we were applying for man's money, they said, the sooner you apply, the more likely you are, you are, you ought to be approved, because you could be approved, but if we run out of money, you know, it kicks it over to next year. Kathy LaBord this morning said, the time is not our friend in this project, they've owned the building since twenty fifteen, uh, Mr. Carroll said, there's nothing new about this project, there is something new about this project, you have an opportunity to put eight million dollars of ARPA money, which comes from the federal government, you know, to put in this plan to, to kick it forward. And so, when you, when you look at, it's a, and, and those comment was made earlier about, why don't we do something about preserving historic buildings? Well, this is the time to preserve a historic building, address the workforce housing in a prime location downtown, there are no other shovel ready projects, you can throw rocks at us and say that we didn't prepare shovel ready projects, and maybe that has not been done, but it hasn't been because we haven't tried to do that, okay? And there are no developers that came, uh, after the council was concerned about, well, why are we gonna do Gafer's? We put it off, and then we put it back out to bits to open up the whole city, tell us where you would like to have a project, and so, we've outlined the projects that are, are viable, but if we don't spend this money, you're gonna give it back to the federal government, and you won't have to worry about the city getting paid back, because we'll never have the project done.
The timeframe, though, to get that money back is what, twenty twenty six, we have three years.
Twenty twenty four to get it encumbered.
To get it encumbered, so we still have two years to get the, the funds encumbered on projects that are viable to us.
Every, go ahead. Go ahead. No, you go. So, um, this project, I, I mean, t- tell us what the impediments are, of why we shouldn't do this project. If it has to do that we haven't teed up other projects, we'll address that, but tell us what is, what is keeping you from voting to support this, and we will get those, uh, answers to you. Kathy LaBord said she would be here next week at the council meeting, there are two people here to answer any questions.
Yeah, well, Ms. Carroll, yeah, it's, it's ten thirty, and we do have a committee meeting next to the, right out at council meeting, if I'm not mistaken, and we could probably just set up, maybe around one thirty, and then bring people back, and just have a committee meeting that's just finished today.
Yeah, I, I just, I, I think that, I, I, I support what the mayor said, if there are objections moving forward with this project, then let's put them on the table and talk about each and every one.
That's right, this is the committee meeting. Yeah, Mr. President. And Ms. Carroll? It, it's, it's, and I, and you, I know, Jamie told you this yesterday, and I think I told some of the other guys, I've seen this president, and I've said this before, I don't think it's bad project, but it deserves community buy-in from the, from the individuals and the groups, as I said, they don't wanna spend this money in this way. That's what it deserves, and we haven't given them an opportunity to see anything. Everything I was told about this project, after I got over that time, I see you in that, I found out that the information in the community was wrong. So, if the community is, is, is totally wrong and has biased information, then they deserve to hear the presentation from the developers, they deserve the chance to ask the questions, they, because ultimately, it's the community that has to ask, live down here and bear witness, so they deserve that. And, and, and it's because I've got, we, it's already ten thirty five, we, we just gonna continue this on next week, we're gonna try to get community to set, and I hate to cut y'all off, but time has, it has, and Madam Carter.
Pop Public Charity, supported one, four fifty two, Pop Public Charity, consider approval with specific public convenience necessity, two slab life express to operate the shuttle service scheduled May thirty first. Forty one, four fifty three, Pop Public Charity, rezoned property located at the east side of North University Boulevard, at the east turn of the Fair and Drive South, from R one, D two, scheduled June twenty first, announcements.
Council will see that a ten quarter line meeting is starting.
I thought I did. I, I, I thought I was gonna have some, I don't know, I don't think I'm gonna have anything.